It's 6:30, so I'll call the meeting to order. Number two on our agenda is public comments. If anybody's interested, nope. Number three, agenda review.
One add, if you do mind, if we could add a letter E under immediate business and call it academic policy.
Academic honesty policy, sorry. Is that it? Yes, for me, yep.
Really, quick question.
Yes.
Did we, did we, fresh my memory, did we table an AI conversation from last time that we need to have this time or no? AI policy conversation?
I don't.
Yeah, we didn't cover it.
We didn't cover it. I don't think so. We can wait till the next one. All right, number four, A is bus routes.
I added the proposed bus routes to the board drive and we just need you guys to review and approve the bus drives that are bus routes. And I will send that over to the bus company and we can get those posted for families.
This is more of just a bone of contention, but is there a reason why we can't get these bus routes sooner in the summer? I understand we have students who are registering later. But, and I, there's no, there's no minced words here, I guess is the best way. I, I'm not happy with Dale, I haven't been happy with Dale for years and it seems like each year it gets later and later with these bus routes. And I have parents reaching out to me saying, hey, do you know when the bus routes are coming out? Just because, you know, you've got a plan, your kids are going back to school in a week and a half and you kind of need to know. So I don't know what we can do about it, but just I'd like to have the fact that these are really late voiced to them.
I can make a note and make sure that we try to have them in place for the first meeting in August, so I can do that for next year.
I do have a question, Carrie, you have your drive. Was the superintendent included on an email that we got about a problem with a bus route? Has that been resolved? Did you, on my phone?
I am not.
Was it an elementary student?
Yes.
I talked to that parent.
I think you were on there, okay.
Um, I don't know that I was on there, but I did talk to the parent.
Okay. It was, it's a new kindergarten student, so that's all set if we approve these bus routes, we're fine, we're okay?
Yes.
Okay.
That issue is separate from the bus routes, yep.
I just want to make sure. Thank you. Anybody have any questions on the bus routes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the bus routes as presented to us, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody abstain? Anybody disagree?
All right, thank you very much.
Let me ask too.
Just a, a quick question, is, is there a way to find out? If they're, like to Carrie's point, is there a way to find out from Dale if they can get these posted sooner? So, you know, the, the parents and families are aware.
Yep, I can have a conversation with Dale and I will make a note for next July to ask for those routes for the first meeting in August instead of the second. That's absolutely fine. I know, I don't see why they wouldn't be able to do that.
They could even just do it with caveat that it's like this is a draft, you know?
Can I just ask one question and Jess, you might not have an answer for me on this, but I know we as a board were approached last year by a family that was trying to get a bus stop near, closer to their house instead of having their student go to the intersection of North Pembroke and Borough. And I was just, I just looked really quickly and I don't see a bus stop for them. I still see that corner of Borough Road and North Pembroke Road. So I'm just wondering if we've heard any more from that family since last year about the bus stop and such.
Uh, nothing's come to my attention. I haven't gotten any special requests, like I've only had one parent that I've been in contact and it was a kindergarten issue.
Okay.
Um, and the principal has been involved and contacted the family as well to connect with the resources.
All right, thank you. All right, B, we have communication devices plan.
I'm going to turn it right over to Mr. Hamilton. In the drive, there was an updated version of the procedures that we put in there for your review.
Jess, really quickly, sorry Derek, the policy that we approved last week, do we have a copy of, a fresh copy of that handy? Just, just for reference while we have this conversation?
It's actually on the website, it was posted on to the.
I was looking at the drive like it's not there.
It's on the board, if you go to boards and go to Pembroke Board and then you scroll down to the policies button on the right. It is updated in the policies online.
I will try to do that as soon as it gives me access. It's giving me a 4:29 warning every time I go, Eric comes, I'll get there eventually, thank you, that's important.
Just want to see one thing.
Jay.
Is C? Okay, Mr. Hamilton, it's all yours.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Oh yeah.
So, no major changes since we spoke with the exception of the procedural details. So I'm not referring to the school board policy that you may be looking at, I'm referring to the school procedure that would add first to the handbook that would build off of the policy that we established last time. So the only major change to struck, so pouchy is and replace that with stored in a backpack or out of sight. With that said, the other part of our work's, we're class is thinking about what the educational period would look like to students. So, speaking with our school administrative team, we're really viewing the first two weeks of school as, we're not going to call it a grace period, but an educational period, I think is the most appropriate term. Students will arrive at school on that Tuesday, they'll go to advisories, they'll pick up hard copies of their schedule, their Chromebooks. And they'll also get some talking points from their advisors about what the restriction of self-learnings in school looks like and how that extends during, during the three phases of the day. So class time, passing time and lunch. And then after they've got that general information from their advisors, we'll hold class meetings with each grade level during the first two weeks of school to talk about that in more detail, to have the dialogue that we discussed last time with students about why with this is going to look like, where we go from here, that type of thing. And then we're not necessarily looking at implementing the consequences as they were described in our policy until the start of week three, I think it'd be September 15th is when we would start to go beyond that. Okay, you've had your warnings, we've had our conversations, you know, now we've really got to start to implement this. So, you know, here's your first official warning, we're going to document that and now we're going to move and progress with those sanctions from there. So. Sorry, can you not hear me that well?
I can, it's just more of a worry about, you know?
Oh, for the record.
It's the audience.
Yeah.
And the digital audience, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so that's our plan from here and then of course, you know, prior to our communication with students on day one and advisory and those follow-up class meetings. We'll have conversations with our teachers when they're back next week and we are in the process of preparing a letter that would go out to families no later than Thursday. Inform them about the law, about the policy and the procedure that supports it.
So I know, obviously, there was not big support for the policy in general, just because of a foundational belief that it shouldn't even be something that we have to do. But I know that administration took your guys' feedback and concerns from last time and really tried to fine tune their plan for implementation and allow for that educational piece that was particularly brought up by student feedback as well of wanting that educational piece to go with that. So I know that there have been plenty of hours put into this, I know it doesn't change the fact that we even have to do it. I know that's a point of contention for sure. But I think it, the administration definitely took into consideration your guys' desires to want it to be more student friendly.
I did take a look at it, the only thing that I see in the new one that was in the drive today is I would really hope we could put part of our school board policy, part of section C in there related to medical devices in the language about IEPs and 504s, because I feel like if it's not in the handbook and what's presented to families, I worry about inconsistency in the building, that a teacher may say, well, the handbook doesn't say that. I'm worried about that.
Our intent is to put the entirety of the school board policy in the student family handbook and then in addition to that, add this procedure as well.
Okay, so they'll both be there, okay. All right, that, I like that idea. That was the only thing I was worried about is.
Yeah, specifically because the, the purpose, the restrictions and the exceptions are so clear.
They are very clear, yeah.
That would allow us to get into the procedural details of, hey, this is how it would apply during lunch, passing time and a break. Then, you know, what does this, what do the consequences look like from there? Because you remove that sort of gradual, gradual sanctions piece from your board policy so it's reflected in the handbook.
Okay, I just know as a board too, we've had issues with that before with discipline and things where the school board policy and then the handbook is slightly, do you know what I mean? So I just want to make sure we're very consistent and clear.
Yeah, and sometimes we really link the board policy to the student family handbook, but again, we'll, we will copy and have the policy in its entirety in the handbook.
Okay. Anyone?
I'm still not. I'm sorry, I know, I'm sorry, I'm beating a dead horse, but I, I, I just can't get behind it. I cannot get behind the during lunch period and I, I feel like we should be able to somehow work around that. I understand it's the law, bell to bell, that's this great law that has been implemented. I am 100% on board during class periods, I mean, I can't tell you how many text messages I got from my middle daughter when she was in school. I prefer they don't have them during that time, but I really, I, I feel like we're infringing on something if we're doing this during lunchtime. And I understand we don't want to go against law, but I mean, we as a school board have no, we can't, you know, manipulate it a little bit to say, you know, during this, the lunch period, you know, phones are allowed, but once class time starts again. I mean, because to me, bell to bell, I understand that's beginning to end, but during lunch, I feel it's their free time, their kind of wind down time, their time in between tests or whatever it is. I, I, one of our options, I guess, is, is more my question.
You're not going to like my answer, Carrie.
I know, I know I'm not.
And I really, like, it's really, I, I truly do understand where you're coming from and I don't disagree with you. I also, I think you run the risk of putting yourself in some legal issues if you try to work around this law. And for, and for what purpose? I think there's, you know, there's a message to be said that, you know, when there are challenges put into our face, we have to overcome that. And we have to be resilient and we have to find a way to work within the parameters we're given. I know that one of the conversations that administration was having was finding things for kids to do, so it's not just awkward silence during lunch or for, like, enforcing and policing during lunch on a constant basis. So there was talk about having different kind of like social activities going on during the lunch hour to kind of help engage kids in that person-to-person conversation, help with those awkward silences and to reduce that kind of policing issue that's going to happen. Because part of that is you've got whoever's on lunch duty is going to spend all of their time telling kids to put their phones away. And what good is that either? So there was a lot of conversation around, you know, setting up activities for kids and being intentional about giving them something to do that's a bit more productive. You know, I think part of the concern of letting them do that during the lunch as well is, you know, part of the reason for this law was to reduce some of the online bullying that happens and the social media issues that happen during unstructured times, because that's when a lot of issues do happen, is during those unstructured times where kids are scrolling social media, posting nasty things about each other and all those kinds of things. So, you know, I understand what you're saying and I don't disagree with you at all. However, the law is very clear, the way that we have to do it right now. And that's not to say there's going to be some, there could be an amendment this fall, you know, when there's a new law that's impactful, like to a great extent like this one is, chances are there's going to be some other legislative, you know, motion that comes through that conquered this year that will adjust that bill somehow. And I know you talked about last time about having, you know, can we break the school day? Can we end the school day during lunch? Can we restart it after lunch? But there's so, there's a long period of lunchtimes, so the manpower to try to negotiate when school would end and restart for different groups of kids and staff, you likely run into CBA issues. You likely run into school hours and counting of days and having that impact the amount of time that we're in school. You know, I think there's, the idea is great, but I think there's a trickle-down effect that isn't going to be manageable or worth the pain that it's going to cause.
I have a couple of questions too. Is the school looking into getting some kind of music playing device or something? Because we don't have enough staff to always do the schedules that these kids put in for. I know of a few kids that are not at the age level that they can leave, but they have back-to-back learning sessions. We're going to have the kids in there for two and a half hours and they're not going to be able to work on their homework with music. And I foresee that being an increasing behavior issue if they're completely bored sitting in the same spot for two and a half hours, because it's two blocks right in a row. So are we going to do something about that?
We, we did talk about music a little bit, I think that was something that the team was going to digest and figure out would be viable. I don't, I don't know that we're going to go purchase any devices, right? But figure out a way to have.
We're going to have to engage them or something, because two learning centers back-to-back like that is not going to be doable for every child. That's a lot of time. And then the other one, and I hate to even say it, but I'm going to, what is the plan for, for staff then? Because there have been meetings where staff are on their phone in front of kids and I think that we're going to have to all get on the same page and we're going to have to make sure that unless it's an emergency, that staff are not using their cellphones in front of the students too.
I think first in response to your, your question about music, I think essentially Chromebooks are going to effectively replace cellphones. And we will try to make use of Chromebooks in every way that students would have utilized a cellphone. So whether that means music or other features, I would assume that that is how Chromebooks will, will hold. And, you know, I'm not going to, you know, students are going to find ways to communicate with one another, whether it be with their friends or with their families through their Chromebooks. So I, I think there's going to be the uses of Chromebooks that we haven't seen in the past, that they'll be used for in the next couple of weeks. Yeah, I think we.
We'll, we'll try to harness that for good, you know, and supportive measures.
Okay.
And, and the staff question, I was interested in this too.
Yeah, because I mean, we've all been in the building and, and we've, we've seen it, that staff, you know, maybe they're taking a test, so they're texting home or something. I think we're going to have to be very careful what's happening in front of the students.
Yeah, our message is that we have to model our expectations with our students, just like anything else. You know, the expectation would be is that, you know, during instructional time, you know, staff phones are away. You know, if you're, if you're in a meeting with families, you know, before or after this law, my expectation would be unless it's, you know, an emergency type of situation, that that phones away and your focus is on your students and your families. But, you know, during their, during their prep year, during their lunchtime, you know, certainly if they're on their phones, this law is something that's built around students, but not adults. However, in the presence of students, the expectation is that the adults in the building are mindful of that and modeling the right example. And so, yeah, just, I know we put in a kind of a, in the policy, the language on learning plans, which I think is wise, because it gives us some latitude. And I also know that the law itself has some provisions for sort of emergency situations and things of that nature. I'm thinking about, you know, and this is more on the enforcement side than I think the actual policy side. And, and this may be one of those, how do we educate people on the staff about these things? But I'm wondering about sort of the, the non-emergency, family emergency kind of situation, right? So where a student just has to get in touch with, you know, a parent for whatever reason, and sometimes it might be not that they're having a medical situation, but that they have some other kind of issue or situation. This is more of a statement than a question, I guess, but I guess I would want us to think about understanding the, the, the provision around emergencies as humanely as possible. At least in the early days, so that we can sort of help people calibrate a little bit. And I don't know if that means the staff needs to be given permission in a tacit way to say, look, you know, you, you have, you have professional judgment here, you, your judgment in these situations. If you've got a, if you've got a student who really seems like they, they just kind of need to contact somebody at home, then, you know, the idea that we would send everyone down to the office to do that feels a little onerous to me when we as a culture have kind of gotten away from that. So that's kind of one of those gray areas that I want us to be able to, I want our staff to be able to know that they can navigate a little bit. You know, for as, for as much as the, the law seems to have these hard boundaries in it, I think the practical application of them will soften those boundaries a little bit and will, and will come to a place where we're generally in agreement. I agree with you that, you know, down the line, three months, five months, six months, somebody's going to be talking about, well, maybe we should throw some different kind of language out there. I think the bill that was originally looked at in committee was a lot better in that regard, because it really did defer to the district and to the school to figure out how to do this. This is a lot more onerous, but maybe, maybe there'll be a reversion to that means. So I don't, I don't know, maybe if you, if you thought a little bit with your staff or if there's going to be a conversation about, you know, what constitutes kind of an emergency communication in some ways?
I think that conversation has started and I would say it's fair to say it's still ongoing. We, we recognize that in situations even prior to this, that students may need that support, they may need that, that phone call home or to that trusted adult, whoever that might be. And, you know, I think frankly, the policy still allows for that to happen and it just has to be that appropriate dialogue, you know, with, with the trusted adult in the building, with the school administrator, to make sure that that, that conversation's happening in the appropriate place. You know, for it to happen in the hallway or to happen in the bathroom may not be the most appropriate place, but finding a place in the building where it may be the appropriate time and place to have that conversation. So, you know, we've talked about, in theory, you know, maybe putting in place landline phones, you know, for student use in the main office and Blanchard House and Walker House. So to your point, like, not just in the central office, we recognize that's not the students go to place to make that, make that phone call if that's necessary. But I think in the past, you know, it's, it's been common for students to go to Walker House or to go to Blanchard and, and make those phone calls. And when you're doing it with administrative position, uh, permission, as it states here in the policy, it wouldn't necessarily need to be on that landline. Yeah, you know, give them a call, you know, take the room next door.
Yeah, you're headed, you're headed to kind of where I was, whereas, you know, it would seem wise to have a kind of designated space, you know, for appropriate and, and approved communication, right? So that, so that we at least, so that people can kind of go into the air and say, well, we know if, if there's something really kind of off, we know that the student can go there and have that. So, and that'll be the place where that gets adjudicated. I know this wasn't easy, so thank you. This is, you know, nobody wants to be here right now.
We want to be spending our time.
No, not a, not a first, not a first issue for either of you probably that you wanted to tackle.
I think it'll probably end up, you know, to your, your point about contacting family, I, I think in, we mentioned it two weeks ago, that these kids are going to figure out a way. You know, they're, with this stuff, they're way smarter than we are. And I, I, I don't think it'll be an issue, I don't like to have to deal with this, as we've all said, but I think they'll figure out a way, I think it'll be okay. I think the policy that we've looked at today and our policy in the handbook is going to be sufficient. I think it'll be okay, yeah, maybe it'll be revisited.
And I think for the most part, having the students' trust and having the open dialogue is going to be a lot better. We haven't heard of issues before of people being actively on their cellphones during instruction time anyhow. So I think that it's going to go over better than what we thought. I think the biggest issues, if there is, it's going to be at lunch. I don't even think they really have time, maybe they do, passing through the hallways, because it's like sardines to get to one place to the other. There's a lot of students transitioning at the same time. I think that's going to be that big of an issue. What do you need?
Don't really need anything, other than just kind of wanted your general blessing. We don't need you to make a motion because it's a, it's a school procedure, not a school board policy, so, but we wanted to make sure that you guys had, you know, had heard that, we heard your feedback, listened to the community input and administration has met several other times and what their plan is for kind of rolling out the policy.
This procedure would not need approval to be included in the handbook?
We would need to approve the handbook changes to include it into the handbook, yep.
We usually do like the handbook all at once, right?
Yeah, and there's, you have an academic honesty policy, so maybe after that academic honesty policy, then approve the addition to those into the handbook.
Anyone else? All right, C, open enrollment.
Come back with an update regarding where we're at with the EPSM case in Prospect Mountain. So what I can tell you is that the, the decision was upheld for the hearing officer's decision that EPSM needs to pay the tuition. So essentially, it was not found in our favor regarding the tuitioning of the students to Prospect Mountain through open enrollment. There are, there is current cases out there at the Supreme Court level that may change that. But as of right now, the hearing officer's decision was upheld, which was that EPSM needs to pay the tuition for the kids to go to Prospect Mountain.
What's the timeframe, do we have one on next level?
Later this fall.
Later this fall. And is there conversation as to what happens to the area?
Yeah, that's my biggest concern.
To me, it validates it if they uphold this.
So that's, that will be, we'll have more clarity on that later on in the fall with the decisions that need to be made.
Will, so the decision we knew was upheld. Is EPSM planning on appealing that decision?
I can't give you that information right now, but I know that they are kind of waiting to see what is happening with the current case that's at the Supreme Court right now.
Do we have a number right now of how many students who should be at PA or attending Prospect Mountain?
To my knowledge, it's 10. To my knowledge, it's 10.
Okay, that's what I thought. And we know is the tuition, sorry, Jean. Is the tuition higher at Prospect Mountain than it is for them to come here?
Yes.
Okay. Or not tuition. Pause. What, what Epsom pays us is less than what they're going to be paying to send them to Prospect Mountain?
So the way that it's going to work according to the current law is that Epsom will be paying 80% of Pembroke's tuition to Prospect Mountain. So Prospect Mountain will be losing money on those students. Because we will only pay, because their tuition is higher than PAs.
I think they're around 20 or 21 is what I saw. I went to that meeting and they're going to be paying under 14 for their kids to go there. So Barnstead and Alton are subsidizing. And that's on the back of their taxpayers too, which seems pretty shady.
That's me. I pay that.
Yeah. Which seems kind of shady and they don't tell you about it, right? Yeah.
Are these people listening? Like hello, are you listening? Like I can't.
The property tax question is, is huge in the state and for something like this to be going on, just really, it seems dirty and underhanded.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of discussions statewide going on between, you know, legislators, between the superintendent groups, between, you know, anybody who's kind of involved in the money aspect of it. Um, there's, there's a lot of discussion going on right now regarding this.
And no, I know a couple of those students, I don't know, maybe three or four of them. This is their second or maybe even third year. And Epsom has paid nothing to this point. Now is Epsom going to have to?
Yes.
Back pay?
Yes.
So it's retroactive. So that's going to hit them pretty hard.
They, they.
I mean, it's not a huge number, but still it's, it's very impactful.
And ultimately, you know, we'll see, we'll have the conversation when we fully get into budget season, but it likely will impact everyone else's tuition rate for the entire SAU.
Well, and that's, that's the other side of it.
Because you're losing out on those tuition dollars coming in and it has to be made up.
This is their, this, I'm, I'm tripped up on this, this, how much they have to pay at one place versus another. Um, how, how, how does that square with what the state has determined is adequate aid? Would, would it not stand to reason, in other words, that if a student, if, if they said, well, town X has to go, has to pay because the student wants to go outside of the, you know, the agreement or whatever. Why would they, why would town X not then turn around and say, well, even if we have to pay, we're going to pay that minimum number that state's determined? Like why, why would it be a different number? Uh, this may be an academic question. We can do it.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Um.
I was trying to get my head on this.
Yeah, so.
When we get to a number, you know?
The only reason you get to that number is because that's what was put into the law back in 2009, I think it was originally. So like a long time ago, this law has been in place, but nobody has utilized it in the state because I think they recognize the danger that that causes with school districts fighting against each other and communities fighting against each other. Um, there, we actually are having conversations in the group I'm in now, trying to come up with legislation for the fall in just that. It, some of the conversation has to revolve around adequacy and maybe that is a bigger conversation, but we're rolling that into the open enrollment discussion on, um, you know, what if we said that tuition should be adequacy? And then that might have a different impact at the state level and maybe that decision will cause adequacy funding to change. So we are having those conversations.
That's a lot. That's okay. All right. D, we have board strategic plan. I just briefly wanted to talk about it. I'm hoping that maybe by Christmas we can get our strategic plan out, but since we have a new superintendent and we have Mr. Hamilton at Pembroke Academy, I'm working on a template now and adding in like our portrait of a graduate, things here at Pembroke Academy and putting it in a better format. So then what I'm hoping is at our working meetings, we can look at it again, add what we want to. We've talked a lot about making Pembroke Academy like a school of choice, adding some extra details in there and then having our administration and maybe even if we want to do another one of those online community forums, get some feedback before we finalize our strategic plan. So I just wanted to see what you guys thought about that plan. And then I was hopeful that we could get it out by the end of this calendar year. Other question is a Jess question on the board strategic plan. Um, I'm assuming things that are on this, um, Facebook pages of the high school, middle school, elementary school, any pictures of activities and stuff, are there all releases on those? Are we able, they should be, if they're on there.
If they're being published through media, then we should have releases. Yes.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure. All right. E, academic honesty policy.
For Mr. Hamilton again as well, added that to, um, the drive if you're able to get in there so you can see and listen at the same time.
So this is regarding the academic honesty policy in the student family handbook. Um, it stems from a conversation that we had with, um, the ALT over the summer months. Uh, we talked about, um, the increase that we've seen in plagiarism, particularly difficulty in detecting plagiarism. But in cases where that is founded, um, there was a significant conversation around, um, sort of the consequences of the penalties, if you will, for those students who have multiple offenses of academic dishonesty. So, um, if you were to draw your attention to page two, the last paragraph, um, it explains that students who plagiarize or cheat will receive a zero on the assignment. First offense will have the chance to make that up, um, and earn up to a four proficient distinction on the reassessment. However, in cases where there's a multiple or a second offense, a student summative assessment will be capped at a maximum for three, out of a three for cheating and any con. So the conversation is around if you've been identified as someone who has cheated or plagiarized a piece of work and now you are reassessing, then you can't earn a proficient distinction grade in that coursework. You can still earn a passing grade, but we would cap it at a three as the highest for those who are a second, third, or other multiple offenses of academic dishonesty.
Any questions, comments?
I mean, I, I, a first offense to me, yes, I, I, I get that. But I think the second offense, I mean, that's cheating is serious. And, you know, it, it seems a little bit lenient. Uh, you know, yes, give them a chance on the second offense to get something back, but I'm, you know, three still is, I mean, a lot of students would be happy with that. Um, you know, it just seems a little lenient to me, but that's my opinion. I'm not an educator. Um, you know, and, and, you know, I, I'd probably prefer, in my mind, I'd prefer two, you know, which is average in this point, right? Now you're average. You're, you're no better, you're no worse. A three gives them a little bit of distinction and down the road, you know, I, I don't know what that means for, for their grade, but that two is, that's a good slap on the wrist, um, versus the three. Just my opinion.
Anyone else?
I have a thought, but not about that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I don't want to open something up for wordsmithing in the room. However, it is the nature of this moment in time. Um, I'm looking at the first paragraph. Not limited to another person willingly completing the work, copying with or without the knowledge of another individual, the use of artificial intelligence paren software. Uh, that last part is probably inadequate to the moment now. The use of artificial intelligence parentheses, software is, and it's probably was rewritten last year and it's, it's really in not a great place for a couple of reasons. One is, um, it would not surprise me if we have people in our school who are deliberately using it as a teaching tool and a learning tool. So you don't want to put something in a policy that inadvertently could be kind of boomeranging in the wrong direction, right? Um, but the other part of this is that what really we want to say, I think, is the use of generative artificial intelligence for the purposes of completing assignments where it is not allowed or required. Something like that is probably what we mean. Um, but usually I'm the vagueness person and I like vagueness in language, but this is one area where I think we need to be a little bit more precise. Don't ask me to say that again because I don't think I can capture it again.
And I'm going to agree with him a hundred percent because I had to sit through all those things for my master's starting next week and they have changed all the wording and everything I had to sit through for that orientation.
It really is requiring, it's requiring a lot more subtlety and nuance in the way you talk about it. I mean, you, you, to the point of the Chromebooks, they put in a search and they're using AI. They, they don't, they can't control that. They just can't. It's built right into the first search function that you have. So we have to be thoughtful about what we're saying if violation is, right? Um, so.
Right. Cause it's not the actual use of AI. It's the intentional use for original to generate a paper.
As your own work and your own thought.
Yeah. I've seen language like unapproved or unauthorized.
Yes. Cause that gives the opening for the instructor, cinematographic design course.
Inserted there, yeah. Beginning of use of artificial intelligence. You were to insert unapproved or unauthorized.
Yeah.
I think that.
And I, and I would put the word generative in there because that's important. That's, that's asking it to do something for you in a creative sense rather than.
Help you research something.
I type in, how do you wire your car and tells that's different.
The first one is, yeah, the first result that always pops up is an AI generated now. You can't turn it off, I don't think.
Right.
I don't think you can.
I've tried. I've tried.
Sure. Um, so the, to the section that Ken brought up, it would be the use of, and we would insert something like unapproved or unauthorized use of generative and artificial intelligence software.
I think that makes sense.
If, if you guys are okay with both of those, the communication devices plan and the academic policy being added to the handbook, I would just ask that you make a motion to add those to the handbook and then Mr. Hamilton, you can get those out.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those approved in a, all those who want to approve the Pembroke Academy handbook with the additions that we made tonight, please say aye.
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 Aye. Epstein? Carrie's a no. All right, moving on. Five, informational. The first thing we have is messaging options.
This one, I believe was you had, there was a question raised around how Allenstown sent out a mass messaging using zip code.
Yeah.
And to my knowledge, it's just the, like you can do that at a post office and it's like zip code, um, mailing through the post office. So if a public entity wants to send out like a distribution newsletter for like budget or whatever the town wants to use it for, you can ask the post office to mail it out, like mass mailing for the whole zip code.
These are text messages.
That, yeah, I couldn't find anything about.
These are text messages that like literally went off and said, hey, just so you know, the transfer station is going to be open now in Allenstown and we're partnering with these people and this is how much it will cost you per month. But they're doing it by location and somehow have Pembroke residents' cell phone numbers.
Yeah, that I couldn't find out.
I was just curious, like how, I can try to find out. I can try to reach out to somebody on the select board in Allenstown and try to find out. I just thought that it would be something that we could maybe tap into in the future for like our town hall meetings when the budget season comes up and.
I know that there might be some capability through like, um, like an online or like old school white pages. Like you can subscribe to like a white pages and you might be able to do it through something like that, but I'm sure, I think there's a cost.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not quite sure how, I couldn't get to the bottom of how they did that.
So how do they have some of the Pembroke cell phone numbers?
They can do that through the place department. It's only allowed for emergency situations or supposed to be. They're not supposed to utilize that for anything other than emergencies, amber alerts and things like that.
I'll try to find out.
Sorry, I couldn't.
Yeah. Cause it's, it's coming in from the transfer station and it's other Pembroke residents too, who asked me, why am I getting Allenstown stuff? We have a school board meeting tonight. The other one was, but there's a select board meeting tonight and it's not all Allenstown. Some of the Pembroke cell phones are getting it.
Like you said, it's zip code.
I think it's zip code. But if you can find out, if not, it can also email somebody on the select board.
Yeah.
Yeah. I asked a handful of people and nobody could give me any clues.
Well, thank you for looking.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Uh, number five, newsletter note.
Um, I just was wanting to know if you guys wanted to craft your first like blurb to go out into the school newsletters that are going to be going out soon. Um, yeah. If, if you want to just work on it through email, I'm fine with that too. Or if you guys wanted to generate a note today, uh, however you guys want to do it.
What do you guys think? What do you guys want to do? I don't mind working on it, doing a little blurb. Maybe Carrie wants to help me. We can just email Jess.
That's fine.
Is that fine?
With that.
Carrie, okay? Just volunteer. Okay. We can do that and then we'll email it to you.
You, could you try to get to me by Friday? So that way I can get it to the principals.
Okay with that?
Okay.
And policy minute review practice.
So this is another one of mine. I'm so sorry, guys. Um, I was just wondering because I had noticed like you, you usually do all your business stuff the first meeting of the month. Then the second month, it's like work on projects and things like that. And I didn't know if you guys wanted to continue your policy review practice on the second meeting of the month, if you wanted to continue, like if things get moved to a second reading, then we do the second reading. And if they need to get pushed to a third, we do that during the second meeting. That way your policies aren't being pushed out like three months at a time. Cause I feel like sometimes the policies take a long time to get approved, but it's because if you're only doing it that first meeting of the month, it's going to take longer to approve those things. But if you don't want to, I'm fine with that too. I just wanted to throw it out there, um, because I know every district is different. If you wanted to do policy review or not, the second meeting, I'm okay either way. And same thing with minutes. I didn't know if you wanted to approve your minutes from the previous meeting at that next meeting, or if you wanted to wait and only do that the first meeting of the month.
What do you guys think? I think we normally, we don't always do the minutes because we don't always, depending on what's going on, sometimes Sandy doesn't have to be here, but she generally is.
You generally are.
Yeah. Cause mostly what we've been using the second working meeting for is budget season takes most of it. Um, and then our strategic plan, which I would hope we would keep doing if we want to try to do that by the end of the calendar year. But I'm okay if the policy people and Ken's here, if anything's like second, third reading, throwing it on the second meeting, just so we don't have to wait to the first meeting of every month.
You know, whatever can expedite that process, I'm in favor. Um, I, I feel like it's, Sharon and I have talked about this, that, you know, we're a little bit befuddled as to how so much of this work falls to a committee of the board, uh, where it feels like it's the kind of thing where we should be kind of looking at something that's already been finalized and we're deliberating on it rather than crafting it, right? There's a difference between being a deliberative body and a creative body. And, you know, committees sometimes do creative work and I understand that, but, but this process of the first, second, third reading is, is a little bit cumbersome. And so anything we can do to get to the end of that pile of policies so that after that, what we would be doing are the things that come up because a law has changed, right? And, and I think to your point, that's one of the things that, that in my brief experience has, has caused a. has, has caused a, a backlog is because a law changes. And while we would, we would normally have carved out that policy time for fixing something that's 10 years old and not as consequential, instead, it's because we have to do cellphones, or we have to do a parent's bill of rights, we have to do those kinds of things. So anything we can do to get through that backlog so that we can then handle those other things, I'm in favor of it, if, if we can expedite that.
Yeah, absolutely, because I, I think we tend to, during budget season, we definitely tend to fall behind when it comes to policy. So I think, you know, just staying on it, moving it forward is the best option.
I agree, thank you.
I will do that, um, because I know there's been a couple of policies that I noticed that we don't have that I want to get on our books, um, that have already happened this summer. So, um, I, I just don't want to, I don't want to fall behind, and I feel like I'm already behind. Thank you.
Are we getting close to the end of the 90s?
Policies?
Policies? Are we going to get into the 2000s?
No. Yeah, we're definitely getting closer, but I can have, I can have a finite number for you for next time.
And I, I, I just, you know, I wonder, you know, does it, does it make sense? I know we take, we have to look at them individually. I do wonder for some of them at least, if they are of a low enough level of impact that we could do them as kind of an omnibus situation, where we just bundle a bunch of them, look at them together and collectively.
Yeah.
And.
We started that too a few months ago, so Patty was taking like 15 of them and taking a little bit of time, and then she was able to come to us and say, hey, these eight actually are not required, we don't need these, they're covered under this or this. So if you, this is why, here's your backup, we can get rid of these and just vote to get rid of them.
And that's the kind of work that.
Yeah.
I can't do because I don't know those rules.
We have.
It would have to come out of your office somehow.
Yeah, I have a little spreadsheet that kind of does that. And so as long as you guys are willing, I just didn't want to be too aggressive with policy things, but I, we have a lot of ground to cover. So if you're okay with it, I can make sure that we can try to get some forward traction on the policies.
That would be great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good plan. All right, moving along, number six, public comments. All right. Number seven, non-public session. The board has the need to go into non-public, or I should have wrote this bigger, under RSA 91, A, three, Roman numeral two, small letter B, which is the hiring of any person as a public employee. And we are going to go into non-public on a roll call vote at 7:24. Jean?
Yes.
I mean, yes? Carrie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.